The guys were going up there just to keep that lodge going. Without this lodge, they couldn't. Him and Charlie Farmer died. He was the forever secretary of every kind of. Then lost him. And so the other lodges got where this could have. I think their worship master was Eddie Elliott. You know, they've been on hard times. Worked with no real town site. There's nothing to draw a population from.
We call this meeting to order. Young County Commissioners Court is sitting in a regular meeting. It is Monday, the eighth day of April, 29th, at 9:35 a.m. May you note that this proceeding is postponed to the time of the quarter. And that all members of the court are present at this time. It's convenient for us to stand. Our Father in Heaven, we give you thanks for all the many things and the blessings that you bring our way. We give you thanks for a wonderful and the most greatest nation that there is on earth. Thank you for the opportunity that we have to serve our citizens. We ask your blessings upon those members of our state and our nation, local or domestic, domestic or foreign, who defend our constitution and who maintain our privileges to call upon the rights and duties that the constitution allows us to do and to be a free nation. We ask your blessings upon all of the youth of this county and that the things that they do aspire to be great citizens. We ask your blessings upon the meeting and the decisions that this court makes on behalf of the citizens by whom we serve and that you forgive us of our many shortcomings as we know that you will. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
Item number three, public comments, announcements, and presentations, even no acts and items. The first thing that I have encountered on here is that we're going to cancel our public hearing that we had scheduled for this time in this day due to a technical error. We just to be sure that all of our eyes are dotted and our teeth are crossed. We thought it in our best interest to repost that for April the 22nd at 9:00 a.m. we will have that hearing. 9:30? 9:30. 9:30, what did I say? 9:00 a.m. 9:30 a.m. 9:30.
He's trying to get everybody here.
Next item I have, we've got a receipt for hotel occupancy tax. Be from Boulder T Ranch. I think that's up in northeast Florida County. $5.25. Not much, but it might add.
That's welcome. Just in case somebody's worried or concerned about any of that, we are about $230 somewhere in that area behind last year's collections. So they're just about the same as they were last year. So we've got several good conferences that are coming out of the four building tourist stuff, so maybe we'll pick up some more there soon. The court has talked to four, maybe five contractors that have the museum cabinets and renovation in place for that moving along.
The next thing on this is we have Young County proposal district submission of tax rolls and taxing units. I believe that's only a statement in how they're and how and what manner they will present the tax rolls to us. It's by statute, it is formality. The next item is Young County 4H volunteer proclamation. We have Penny Baron here with us and it looks like she's got a whole host of folks.
We do. First, I would just like to start off saying that each year, thousands of volunteers during their time, energy, and even their own finances in some cases to support our local 4H program. And several of those people are with us today. Several could not make it. I would like to ask all of our leaders and coaches and adult leaders to step up if we have. So I can recognize y'all before we sign our proclamation honoring as National 4H Volunteer Week. Starting from our left, we have our new archery coaches, which have been a blessing to our program and our projects with Young County 4H. We have Blake Seiler, Thomas Hernandez, and David Cook. All started in February and have been to trainings outside of the county for two long days. Two just came back this weekend, so to have them a third day in a row for each program is a blessing. Our numbers have increased probably close to 20% due to the project area of our archery projects. That's a really successful project happening at the moment due to these three gentlemen. And then we have Christine Richards, who is our longstanding 4H volunteer, but she's currently our club manager for the Lone Star 4H Club, as well as any other possible roles she could fill. She does it probably on a daily basis, honestly. We have Jamie Booth, who is a new volunteer coming into our program. She's doing my parent adult leaders this year, and she's also taken on our renewed 4H homeschool club, which kicked off this year, which has about a 25 to 30 member potential that we're looking at right now going into our spring month. So we appreciate Jamie. She also helped with our concession standing yesterday, but this weekend, so busy, busy. We have Joe Bob Widdaker, a longstanding, again, parent volunteer, who's also part of our parent adult leaders and helps coordinate currently our truck raffle, as well as the other volunteers in the room. And then, not truck raffle, I'm sorry, our 4H raffle drawing for our lawnmower and trailer. No longer a truck raffle.
We have tickets, by the way. And you have tickets.
If you wanted to bring the trailer up for y'all, I'm like, well, there'll be a commissioners court, but we can park it out their windows, they can look out through it. And then finally, we have Charlie Rogers, who is a new coach for us, new volunteer with our shotgun program, trap. Again, our shooting sports right now is skyrocketing. We are blessed to have the volunteers that have come in and help support our older volunteers to really regain some new energy there. It's a popular project. It's a lot of interest, a lot of new 4H members coming in that are going to part of the 4H program. So for them, the program's great. And for all of our volunteers, want to contribute some daily, similarly daily. I mean, we see them or have conversations every day. So we appreciate them. And our Young County 4H council is here, as in will as members are here to support their volunteers for our proclamation. And our council kids would like to also resign. Our total volunteer hours for 4H during 2018 year, definitely including the hours of these gentlemen have been in over the last, and women have been in over the last couple of months, but our hours came out to 3,393, not including any duplicates. So they're just individuals, volunteers that may have also contributed in other extension volunteer program areas. But with 3,393 hours at a volunteer rate, state rate or national rate that's $24.69 an hour, came out to be $83,773.17, which we are presenting to commissioners court today. So we have that on top of the proclamation signing, and then of course after the signing, we'd like to get a picture of all our volunteers and our volunteers.
We will. We can all gather around here, we'll have a signing on this resolution.
We'll stand up behind the commissioners. They get to sit down on those chairs.
Item number four is volunteer proclamation. Whereas volunteering of one's time and resource is a fundamental part of our country's condition and is essential to its spirit and whereas it is increasingly more evident that our nation's greatest resource is its people and whereas volunteers have shown that they truly care and share generously with themselves and whereas volunteerism is increasingly recognized as a central partner with government, education, and industry in doing the work of our nation and whereas volunteers in the Young County 4H program enable youth of Young County to more fully develop and utilize their life skills, effectively use their resources, and more fully extend the knowledge of the university to the people and whereas volunteerism directly reflects the dramatic principles upon which this nation was founded and that everyone, regardless of circumstances, position, or other factors, can volunteer and whereas we are seeking even more contributions of human resources and volunteerism and better application of these valuable contributions. Therefore, we wish to honor, to thank the dedicated 4H volunteers of Young County who give so freely of their valuable time, energy, and abilities by proclaiming this week of April the 7th through 13th, 2019, to be officially designated as National Volunteer Week in Young County. And in doing so, I call all citizens of Young County to help renew and sustain the spirit and vitality of this great nation by committing a portion of their time to address the needs of their communities through the volunteer action. Signed this day, the eighth day of April, 29th, by Young County Commissioners Court.
I'm going to have two quick photos in case anybody wants to blink in one of them. So, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you, Judge. And again, just a big thank you.
Picture the ticket. I'm going to picture the check.
Oh, yeah. Before you sign them, you can all hand out the guest card.
Do you want us to hold them in here?
I didn't see it. They seem mad.
I'm standing directly in front of my receding.
Are you ready?
He's going to stand in the back.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. That's clever.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
I'm going to take one of the pennies. Maybe your flash isn't coming on, is that okay?
It's fine. I can fix it on.
She'll follow shot.
And again, for our volunteers, of course, you know, we're always trying to strive to do better with our 4H program and grow our program. Our priority are our kids, our 4H members. But it's because of our volunteers that we're able to do anything.
Love your hands, man.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Charlie. Pistol-nackin' Charlie.
Call me afterwards.
I have my hand just right up my stuff. I'm going to go. I'm going to do this to my hand.
Yes.
Bar?
Yes.
Hello.
I didn't know you were here.
What do you intend to do, September?
You watch?
I'm going to throw it away.
When? Oh, my God, she's me. And your traits can't.
I'll get two.
I'm like, somebody look in that mirror.
Put it up, man.
Especially shooting sports. Late second minute or something.
Amen.
We had one of the largest ones.
Let's get back to you.
Item number 3A, discuss March activities, report from jail, sheriff's office, private background. County Sheriff.
Good morning.
I don't make swords.
Okay. Not a lot changes in the jail activity report than from last month. We have 57 in today. And I think after, and after he printed this, we gained one more out of county. So right now, we're housing seven in Baker.
I forgot to page that, but we, I think I was out there on Thursday.
It was sometime last week. I don't remember what day exactly.
Last week.
Yeah, we passed everything on that.
But I, yeah, I was seeing notice of that.
Everything was right on.
Good job.
Like I said, we had 57. Everything pretty much the same. We didn't have to take anybody to the emergency rooms. That was a good month.
12 of the transport to PDJC.
12 transported. Yeah. That's up a little bit, but that just means we're having more.
Process.
Yeah.
More court going on.
About 35 percenters still go to MHMR during the month.
That's always, pretty much. If you'll look, it says, I believe.
Our population's down, those visits are up, so I guess they're learning.
There was 20 inmates who had went to MHMR. That's a lot.
I just point out that your jail is housing a lot of mental ill people. If the state didn't be helping with it.
You know, and I think that's the way, well, I know it is, you know, working with the sheriff's association, that's a problem at all, especially the rural counties, that we're having to foot the bill on all this.
It's not one of those unfunded mandates that the state sends.
Because the bigger counties have mental health people in their jails.
Well, they do. I mean, you go to a place like Austin and Houston and places like that, that they have their own facilities, and in fact, the one in Austin's bigger than our jail, so.
Does the state have to pay for that?
I don't. I don't think so, because right now, nobody's getting any help. Nobody's getting any help right now, so.
No, that'd be all locally funded, pretty much.
But they have a bigger income than we do.
That's true. They've got more things to spend it on.
They do. That's all right.
Harris County is about $30,000 for Morris County.
Yeah. Wow. Now, patrol. Our police service is about the same, but civil process, Ser 68. I'm not for sure what the total amount was. Oh, yeah, I do right here.
38.7?
Mm-hmm. So we're up last month on our arrests, and if you'll look down at the bottom, arrests made for drug-related charges were 21.
How many of those were the dogs involved in?
You know, and that's what I was talking to John. I know that there was a lot of them that were, and I know there was some that wasn't. We have that information. For some reason, haven't been able to get it on here yet.
But the dogs are pregnant, they were?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. There'll be some times, you know, where you go out to, when you make a traffic stop, and the officer or deputy will smell, you know, like marijuana, which gives you probable cause to just go ahead and search a vehicle. Then you have where they give you consent to search a vehicle. So we, they won't use the dogs there.
So these dogs are mostly used when they don't get consent and to bring the dog out to give them probable cause?
And then also, which we don't have on here, is the other counties that we have assisted this last month. And I know that we have, Archery County, we have been assisting them, and they have learned positively and found drugs and narcotics in vehicles, so we will, if we can get this information on here, so then at least that'll be on there as well.
Are we seizing any?
We haven't been a while. We just, I don't think we have since last year.
Money's really hard to seize unless you're on a major interstate.
Yeah, you know, we're done.
It's more property that you can seize in a smaller county.
Right.
No, we don't. I think we have a new category of drugs here. THC concentrate.
I'm sorry?
THC, we've got a new category of drugs.
Oh, yeah, that THC is.
What, they vaping it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And vape is so big in school and high school and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Is THC coming out of Colorado?
Most of it.
About.
Up and running, all their CBD stores and all that stuff.
Yeah, CBD stores.
THC concentrate, CBD is a long way farther.
They are.
But the CBD stores, you can buy marijuana and everything.
CBD, you can, they're selling it right here.
But not the marijuana part. That's what I'm talking about.
Right.
The hallucinogen.
Extract it all.
Yes.
Yes, more traffic stops tonight.
Speaking of traffic.
Yeah, traffic's up.
Our traffic stops were up quite a bit. I know that, where was that? I saw 379.
Do more traffic stops correlate to more drugs?
Yes, should.
And other arrests.
And other arrests, well, that's right. DWIs are up last month, or actually, this month, our DWIs are up.
How many cell phones take this D I R R?
How many?
Some phone companies. That's pretty hard.
I don't think we have any that are up.
Nobody talks on their cell phone.
Nah, boy. Guys are going like this all over the road.
Thank you.
Item number four is Considerous County Clerk's Minutes at previous meeting, pending March the 25th, 28th, April the 1st, respectively. Are there any additions, delays, and corrections?
So.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wiley, signed by Commissioner Rogers, to accept those minutes as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve those minutes. Five oh. Item number five is Consider Prejudicial Financial Report, I think it's a pledge, is there any in all in favor? Item number six, Consider All Of First Budget Amendments and Vouchers, all in favor?
We don't have any budget amendments, but we always have vouchers, and there is not a mutiny, so precincts abstaining. Total is $125,467.06. And out of the general is $103,255.90. Majority.
So move it. Thank you. We have motion by Commissioner, approve settlement, Commissioner signs to approve vouchers payable as presented, all in favor? And if that will be one abstained, that will be four, zero, one, noting that Commissioner Wiley is abstaining.
Also, I've put the vehicles in the deal. I think he got them on there the fourth. I'm getting lots of questions, emails, and I have to go log in, and a lot of people are asking a lot of questions. But we'll close it on the 18th of March and see what we have. We did put a reserve of $5,000 on the tacos and nothing on the other two that don't round.
$5,000 on the off-the-wheel and no reserve on the.
Right. And I think the pickup will start, and they haven't started in a while, the batteries did, but the transmission only goes forward, it doesn't go back. Anyway, I'll let you, so I guess I'll have something for you on the 22nd, show them what we got for you. Do more traffic stops correlate to more drug rates?
Yes, should. Another rest of them, that's right. DWIs are up last month, or actually, this month, our DWIs are up.
How many cell phones take each DWI?
How many? Some low.
That's pretty hard.
I don't think we have any.
Nobody talks on their cell phone.
Nah, boy, guys are going like this all over the road.
Thank you.
Item number four is consider county clerk minutes previous meeting, that being March the twenty-fifth, the twenty-eighth, April the first, respectively. Are there any additions, delays, and corrections? Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Rogers, to accept those minutes as presented. All in favor? Approve those minutes. Item number five is consider treasury financial correspondence, third pledges during action here.
You should have the security.
One million, two hundred, two thousand, eight hundred, ten dollars and eight cents overplayed.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That all, that all the courts were having this present, for this meeting? Got all of the motions by Commissioner Wiley and Secretary of Commissioner Pruitt to approve the treasury financial report. Any call in favor? Item number six, consider auditors budget amendments and vouchers paid.
We don't have any budget amendments, but we always have vouchers. There is not a muting, so precinct board is abstaining. Total is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, four sixty-seven and six cents. One twenty-five, four sixty-seven point oh-six. Amount of the general is a hundred and three thousand, two fifty-five ninety. The majority.
So move.
We have motion by Commissioner Pruitt, second by Commissioner Sykes, to approve vouchers payable as presented. All in favor? Note that that will be one abstained, that will be four, zero, one. Noting that Commissioner Wiley is abstaining voting.
Also, I put the vehicles in the deal. I think he got them on there the fourth. I'm getting lots of questions, emails, and I have to go plug in. And a lot of people are asking a lot of questions. But we'll close it on the eighteenth of March and see what we have. We did put a reserve of five thousand on the tacos and nothing on the other two.
Five thousand on the off of the wheel and no reserve on the.
Right. And I think the pickup will start, they haven't started in a while. Batteries did, but the transmission only goes forward, it doesn't go back. Anyway, I'll let you, so I guess I'll have something for you on the twenty-second, show them what we got.
Sound good?
Okay, that all be with the plea, the auditors report?
Yes.
Item number seven is considering employee bonds, the thing of Tommy Gittmar, commuter supervision corrections office, and Melissa K. Martin. Same commuter supervision corrections department, each for five thousand dollars. Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Rogers, to approve those bonds accordingly. All in favor? Five, zero. Item number eight, consider extension agent Justin Rogers and Penny Baron March report request for reimbursement, that being Justin Rogers, six fifty-three fifteen, and Penny Baron, five oh-five seventy-six, respectively.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Pruitt, second by Commissioner Rogers, to approve those reimbursements in court as requested. All in favor? Item number nine is ratified contract with American National Leasing Company for twenty nineteen PPV Tahoe jail transport vehicle.
Yes, you signed, and there's a copy of it.
I'll move, we're ratified, I'll second that.
Family Street eleven, eleven thousand, one dollar a month. With the last payment of nine dollars.
Motion by myself and seconded by Commissioner Sykes, to approve two ratified contract existing with American National Leasing Company for the twenty nineteen Tahoe jail transport vehicle. All in favor? Item ten, consider tax resale DE from Purdue Brandon Field College in Mont, three oh-one highway seventy-nine south, all in Texas, bid amounts one thousand and ten dollars.
Sure move.
Or you go ahead and say it, okay. Good.
All in favor? We have that four, zero, one, make note. Commissioner Rogers is abstaining from that vote. Item number eleven, discuss, consider burn restrictions. How much volume did I hog here?
I got an inch, it might have. Six tenths up right off of there. I got six tenths up far.
That's what I wanted.
It blew in. It did, it blew.
Is there a ban or no?
No, no action on the.
We come to item number twelve. This is in lieu of our public hearing, we thought we should discuss the tentative agreement with the writs lack. We see that there are changes associated with that. We'll now enter closed session. We send them to five fifty-one point oh-eight-one, Texas Government Code. Copy this economic development. This will be deliberation to council, the offer of a financial or other incentive to bell town power or vision prospect that the commissioner's court seeks to have located Young County and with which the governmental body is conducting economic development negotiations with and to conduct private consultations with the attorney retained by the commissioner's court for the duty of the attorney to the commissioner's court under the disciplinary action, the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas, clear the conflicts with chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code. We'll now enter closed session.
I have a question. Indian Mill Road, which one of you generals is my commissioner? Is there any publicly documented on this thing, which y'all fixed to discuss, or anything for the public to look at so far?
Not yet.
There will be a public hearing, will there?
Yes.
Thank you, General.
We have nine thirty, on the twenty-second.
Do you have me every week?
Yeah, no, every other week, generally.
Every other week?
Every second, fourth month, it's a regular.
Second, fourth month? Thanks, General.